I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so the agenda is posted seventy-two hours prior to each meeting at the following locations: City Hall, the Public Library, and the Department of Commerce, also posted on the city website. The city welcomes public input. Members of the public may address the city council by completing a public comment court and getting to the city clerk required to the meeting. At this time, the public may address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Pursuant to state law, the city council may not discuss or take action on issues not on the meeting agenda. I reserve the right to place three minutes limits on curational comments. Staff may be asked to follow up on certain items. Public comments? Seeing none, now we go to appointments, approval and appointments to the Public Safety Commission. Approval and appointments? No?
Yes, so the council will have to make a motion.
Okay, then.
Perfect timing. We just advanced it.
So we're gonna do appointments number one? No?
Yes.
The motion to appoint Dr. Bozell from alternate to Commissioner with a term that will expire on June 30th to 2020, and appoint Dr. James Lin at the alternate to the Public Safety Commission with a term that will expire on April 10th. So.
I still move?
Second. So those who give us the eye?
Aye.
Alright, then.
Mr. Bozell and Dr. Lin, if you could stand and raise your right hand for me, and repeat after me, "I..."
Aye.
Repeat your name.
Jeff Bozell.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Next is open session, chair of discussion on public safety issues and charge facing this city. Do we need an introduction? I mean, this is our first meeting. Do we have a meeting?
You met last year right after the commission was formed.
We met, I think, in May of last year, or March or something, so.
Okay.
It's like we got to get it.
Okay, then let's go directly to chair of discussion. Chair, do you have any?
Would you like, if I may, we have not met. I'm Al Boe.
Oh, I have.
I have a commission at the moment. Thank you for joining us. Appreciate that. Any of the commissioners that may have things that they would like to raise or issues they'd like to discuss. When we met a year ago, you shared with us some ideas and some things you'd like us to consider and to undertake. And hopefully, over the last year, we've done that. We've addressed various issues. However, one of the things has become quite clear to, I think, all of us as commissioners, and please jump in, guys, if I don't say this right, is that in our role of gathering facts and providing a forum for the members of the community to share their ideas, we don't really have a formal methodology in place to feed back to the council the results of any input we might get from the community. We learned recently, I guess we should have learned a year ago, that the fact that we are including information in the minutes of our meetings is not, in fact, the way we're, is not, in fact, resulting in feedback. So we would like to talk with you about two things. One, a formal way for you to delegate or to direct us with issues you'd like us to specifically consider. Hopefully, those issues would be identified together with a timetable for our holding a public hearing or doing investigation, whatever it might be. Also, it would be nice if you could identify for us at the same time, give us some guidance on what your goal might be, such as you'd like us to address, to hold a hearing and consider thus and such in anticipation of your possibly developing legislation, developing an ordinance, modifying an ordinance or the like, or this is an issue that we think the public should, we'd like some just general input from the public, and we think that a way to get it is through your commission. So we're looking for some kind of direction downward, formal direction rather than informal. And we'd like to adopt a formal methodology of feeding information up to you. Obviously, simply having information in our minutes isn't the best way to do that. So we'd like your guidance on how you believe we should gather, not just gather information, but offer opinion as a result of that information, or offer recommendations or guidance as a result of public input that we gathered. We're not, I think I speak for everybody who's saying, we're not sure that you are even equipped to do that today, but we'd like you to do it within the next short period so that we can develop essentially a more formalized structure. We've operated in a very informal manner for the last year because we haven't had a formal communication structure. Members of the council who've acted as liaisons to our commission, I'm sure have taken information back and shared it with others, but, and, but there've been times when we've gotten our teeth into something and then it disappeared. And the next thing we hear is that you're dealing with it. Well, that's great, but would have been nice to have some kind of a handoff or a more structured transfer of information. So one of the things we'd like to get from you is some structure, some functionality, some methodology. Did I say that right?
Well, Al, I think that's very well said. I think that categorizing or identifying priorities is also important for us. We've had a huge amount of information this last year, and a lot of different things, not only information based on each one, but a lot of different things that I don't know that we've made any decisions this last year. It's like, we only have X amount of time, and it feels like if these things that come to us are maybe identified more in priorities, and we deal more directly with that, and get it out of the way, get back to you, I agree with you entirely, Al. I think there's a lack of communication between us and the council that would be very, very beneficial.
I agree. I'd like to know exactly what it is you want us to do. For example, when both chiefs and Michael present their budget needs and their want list, are we supposed to take a look at that and get back to saying, "Yeah, I think the department needs a taser for every officer. I think the fire department needs whatever it is they need. It's gonna cost X amount of money. Do we have that in the budget, or is that just something you're gonna deal with? We may make that recommendation here that you should ultimately, you have to decide what we can afford or not." So I'm not too sure. We're getting this information. What are we supposed to do with it? Because I may have my ideas, and others may have their ideas on what we think is a priority for these agencies based upon the recommendations made by the chiefs.
And your point with regard to budgetary issues is a perfect one, because over the year, we've all spent a great deal of time with the three departments and department heads and learned a great deal about their operations, and might very well be in a position to help you understand their budget requests, or might be able to offer either a complimentary or an alternative observation with regard to things you've got yourself. But we don't have any... It's not written into our mission. Our mission is so vague that we're not sure what we can do. And if it doesn't get less vague, we'll probably start doing some things that maybe don't want us to do.
We've gone home. Just make sure, if you do, just make sure you wear clothes.
Well, any other comments?
Well, that's item one.
Well, may I respond to that? Because if you do raise a variant, there are two issues right now where I think the consensus of the council is that recommendations would be helpful. Number one is obviously the budget. So when you sit there, especially in the CIP part of the budget, the capital improvements, and if you have that hearing, and you hear from the chiefs, and you guys discuss it, and come up with recommendations, we would treat it like any other recommendation we get from planning committee, from any other commission that is either accepted or rejected commission, but at least we're getting more heads on a problem. But you're right, we need a formal framework to set that up, and that is something that probably should be greater than just having our liaison showing up. Have you held hearings on the seven-ten money?
Yes.
Yeah. And, see, that's another example, because the public has gone there and expressed their needs and their wants and desires, and we have shown up also at those. And so eventually, a consensus is going to be, is needed to be fed from what you've heard to us, but we don't have that framework. At times, and I don't know if you include it on your, in your Friday reports, your Thursday afternoon reports, do you include their recommendations from there?
Are you talking about the weekly briefing that goes out to the community, or my email to the council?
Your email to the council.
Yeah. I don't include commission recommendations in their general.
How about the one to the community in general?
It depends on what the departments submit. That's just a compilation of information submitted by departments. Sometimes there are highlights in meetings. I know the planning department submits lots of comments about what happens at DRC or Planning Commission. Certainly, public safety departments could submit some rates of what happens.
Well, as the liaison to the Public Safety Commission, perhaps I will sit down and look at what other cities are doing with respect to the framework or getting that information. Because I don't, I do think we push some stuff down to you. It may not be formal or informal, but you're right, we're not giving feedback to know where you are and what your recommendations are.
We probably are expressing ourselves in our minutes.
So the challenge with minutes is that the council, I actually haven't looked at the minutes, so that may be accurate, but the council's policy on minutes for all the council and commission bodies, where the minutes were only supposed to be in the action format, so they're actually, per the council's policy, should not be that level of detail in minutes, which then makes it totally unhelpful.
Well, technically, since we have no authority to do anything, then there should be nothing in our minutes. Is that right?
No, you would convene. You would hold discussion. And if you voted on something, then that would...
Is it a possibility to have a template that could be two-way, and, for example, after the commission meets, issues discussed, updates for the council, attachments, questions for the council, recommendations for the council, and then to not make it laborious, but something that we could then follow up on. And similarly, if there could be something, perhaps from the liaisons that goes out to the commission, saying, "Could you please take a look at this issue or another issue at your coming meeting, and let us know what you have found?" Similarly, we'd like to be alerted to issues that we may perhaps have not heard about. It could be a simple two-way back and forth with a template.
How about if we were to, independently of the minutes, prepare a one-page report after our meetings and send it to the council? It said, "This is, these are issues that either were raised by the public or were discussed as a result of an ongoing basis, and these are either recommendations, the recommendation might be that you should consider it, or we've considered and we think you should do this," or something, but maybe try to come up with some kind of a one-page report that we could just send you, or...
A summary would be great. And also, keep in mind, I think what's happening, from what I've seen, since I've recently been looking up the liaison and see some of your meetings, and follow the work that you're doing, there seems to be also a timeframe issue, because you get, you take in a lot of information from public comments, but there's not necessarily an end resolution. It's kind of like it's all coming through you, and then it needs to somehow get to us. And for the other people that aren't there, you know, it's hard. We bring it up when we come to, it's an agendized item before us, but we sometimes that lost in translation, right, between what you're taking in. And it'd be great to have some sort of way, when you're doing the one-page summary, to reflect the public comments, and then here was our commission discussion, and here's our recommendation, you know. So make sure that we're getting all of that, so we're all aware of what's going on. It might be over the course of one hour. This is continued, because we asked, you know, whatever department to come back with a prioritized list. I think that was what you asked regarding the CIPs last time. So this coming month, hopefully, you'll be getting a priority list from their perspective, which then you'll be able to discuss in more detail.
This could be something we can do outside of the minute issue, so we get around the problem of not putting...
It would be a report that would be received and filed by the city council.
Yeah, it can be a...
And then would memorialize more of the action that you're taking, instead of, we're not getting it until...
Could someone pull up the ordinance that set up the commission?
Thank you, Mayor. In the meantime, I'm sorry, I really hate playing this role in these meetings, because I know it's very frustrating. I apologize for that. The report is a great idea. A one-page summary that represents the commission's thoughts about things and recommendations is great. The only caveat is this will become a public document. It'll become a public record, and so you want to be sure that it doesn't act as a supplement to the minutes. The minutes are a legal document, and if you have a separate document that is reflecting the discussion that was held, and the reasons that you made decisions, but those aren't actually in the minutes, that's potentially a legal issue for us. So I know this is a weird, fine line to walk, but I think the idea of a summary to send recommendations forward would be great. You certainly could even get staff to assist in that respect. We just want to make sure that we don't have two separate documents that are kind of getting into the same thing.
Can this be an addendum, a section of the minutes, where it's built right into the minutes, and here's a summary of what took place, so that you don't have two different documents?
It would not be, per the council's current policy on minutes. And just to be clear, I mean, that policy could change, and this probably isn't the form to have that conversation, but there are reasons why there was a decision made to just have them be action minutes. There is risk associated with having a subjective summary of what the discussion was that happened in the meeting, and so I think the decision was, well, let's just not do that at all. But I think the idea of, it sounds like everybody's on the same page. The communication needs to improve in this respect, and maybe we can have an offline conversation with the liaisons from the council, and the chair, and maybe the vice chair, and try to find a way to get this information to go back and forth a little bit better. I know that it is challenging in commissions like this, things like the planning commission have statutory authority. Their role is very clear. When you have bodies that are kind of advisory in nature, there's this commission, the recreation commission is similar. It does get a little bit gray, and certainly want to try to fix that however we can.
Well, why don't we prepare this document for our next meeting, after our next meeting, and we'll all look at it and tweak it, and get it to a point that it's legal and also communicates upward? We prepare our agenda in advance of our meetings. We typically meet with the three department chairs whose areas are assisted by the commission, and we typically meet about, I want to say, two weeks in advance. Is that right, chief? Where do we meet? One week?
Last week.
Is it the week in advance?
Yeah.
In any event, well, we meet in advance and prepare the agenda. When I say "we," myself as the committee chair, vice chair, or the commission chair, the vice chair is invited and attends at times, and the three department heads. That might be an ideal target for any kind of formal direction. Now, we do meet after the city council meeting. So for example, you're having a meeting tonight. Something came out of your meeting tonight. If you were to think might be appropriate for us to begin to mull around or do whatever, you would be, you could advise us of that. Now, in this particular case, our agenda is already published, but we can find a way to address that, I suppose, so that we can work the time again. But whatever, there must be some way that you can advise us, and we can get it on our agenda, and let the public know.
Unfortunately, it might be, there's something on the agenda tonight that I would love to see a piece pulled out and given to the commission for further research. I can certainly attempt that during the meeting, and say, it would be, in my opinion, a perfect example of a body that could do the research and make recommendations back to us.
Okay, so we'll do that, and just make sure.
Oh, thank you. Want to go down further? Let's see. Wait, wait, wait. Go back up. Let's look at this. Maybe it's just your person meetings. Okay, creation and composition.
Only the last.
That's 21st century. Yeah, okay.
Just as a reminder, this was essentially taking the traffic committee and just tweaking the language slightly, as opposed to a wholesale recreation of a commission.
No, it's okay.
So study and make recommendations.
But it still means they have to find a way to communicate, which is more of a regulation quote-unquote than it would be in the working.
Just so make sure when you send a report, you know, maybe through the signature, so that way we won't violate the ground. And, you know, so that way we can, we can...
I can just take it after you. Mr. Chair, just one question. You're talking about, you're not talking about, for example, an issue where you hear it first, and then it goes to the council, and the staff report should just include your feedback. You're talking about things that maybe don't necessarily go back to the council, unless they know that you think it should go. Things outside of the kind of normal course of business, right?
Well, the commission, whether it's supposed to or not, does have opinions.
Good?
And we don't have any way of sharing it.
That's so sad. So what I'm trying to say is if...
Advisory.
And we were putting them in our minutes, but what I'm hearing you say, since we're not authorized to have opinions, our opinions shouldn't be in the minutes.
No, you're authorized to have opinions. They're just not necessarily supposed to be in the minutes. I think you were appointed for your opinions. What I'm suggesting is there's some items that go in front of you that then generate a staff report to the city council, and it would be appropriate for staff to be including your feedback in those reports.
Dr. Marlowe, who decides what is to be put on the agenda?
I believe it's a mutual decision between the chair and the three department heads.
So if there's anything you think that's helpful, do you want to the city?
Well, we're doing that now. So, but we're gonna, you've given us some guidance, I think. We'll figure out a way to provide some formal feedback. And I sense that if it turns out that our doing it in a one-page summary turns out to not be politically appropriate, then we'll find some other way, but...
I think it is.
No, I think it is.
That's where we're gonna target.
Let's start that way then. Okay, great.
I think that's most easily stolen.
Yes, so vice.
Yeah, so since we're all here, all the party are here, can we at least agree on the template? So we can get the first one out. I prefer things, issues, discussions, recommendations. Wanna nail that down, so we can hear the first things? Wanna write down? Otherwise, we'll just come up with our own and see if it's...
You know, I would come up with your own. We're much better being critical than the terminal.
You may look through other cities, see if there is something that other cities with similar focus commissions will produce.
And then you can leave open areas where there isn't anything in that area.
What you will find from us will evolve.
Exactly.
It's important.
Chairman Bo touched on this, but I'd like to also see if we can explore a way to get more ready access to the requests from the council, direction, the action items from the council, the results that are desired from the council, and get that direction well in advance of our meetings. What has typically been happening is Chairman Bo and the department heads do a great job of working on an agenda, but oftentimes, three days before, it's distributed to us, and we get a packet of all this material, and there's one line on the agenda that says, "Discussion of seven-ten," and 5,000 pages, and we don't know what to do with it. So we get there, we figure out what to do with it, and then we can't do anything at the meeting, because we haven't thought about the issues, and it's gotta wait a month to get to the next meeting, and then the next meeting. So if there's a way in which we can figure out how to get, we've talked about information flowing back to the council, but a streamlined process for getting information from what the council, and what they want, what they need, what we should be advising on, and get that in advance of our meetings, so that we can study it individually and come to the meeting with a view that can perhaps lead to advice at that first meeting, as opposed to subsequent meetings, if possible.
That's what I'm saying, multiple.
Yeah, procedurally, there's some things we can do as a commission, but as far as having direction or requests from the council, I would hope that you would simply send them to us as quick as you can, anytime.
And I think if you're getting packets three days in advance, hey, I would hope that staff could, because you do meet on Mondays.
On Mondays.
Right. And so, and that's problematic, because it really means the weekend. It'd be nice if you could get whatever packet you have to accompany your agenda the prior Monday, so that you during the course have a longer time, because sometimes, for example, you brought up the seven-ten issues. There are a lot of proposals there, a lot of things being sent around from various people in the public, I'm sure you got, as well as the staff produced, you know, pieces. And so I think also having a larger lead time would help you guys, or, gosh, a few people, to be more effective, because you'd have more time to spend with the materials. So the three-day thing, if that's happening, I don't think that's enough, because we all feel like, you know, even from Friday to Monday is tight for us to review things.
So this would shift the time on a number of things.
When is the agenda posted?
I imagine the agenda is posted seventy-two hours in advance, but the challenge that we're up against...
Does that count the weekend?
It does count the weekend. The challenge that we're up against is that the department heads are meeting with the chair the week before the meeting. So if you're suggesting that the packet go out that day, that's when the agenda is being finalized. So once the agenda is finalized, staff reports still have to be written. It's a very short time window. The other thing that I'm hearing is that the timing between the council meeting and the Public Safety Commission is bad. So I'm wondering, for example, I mean, it would, for logistics reasons, it would require moving potentially another commission meeting, but what if, just hypothetically, the Public Safety Commission met on the fourth Monday of the month, instead of the third Monday of the month?
I think we discussed possibly doing that.
We also considered moving it to the first Monday, and in fact, voted to do that, but then we found that you're having town halls on the first Monday.
Oh, that's right, that's right, that's right.
So we decided that wasn't practical. But I'm guessing we would be amenable to adjusting our meeting schedule to make the role, to make the commission more effective.
Because what I'm thinking is, I believe it's the Rec. Commission that meets on the fourth Monday, and they don't end up in the same role with the city council that you guys do, and so perhaps it's just a switch of those two bodies that would help de-constrict the time.
If they're willing to do it, we have to change the ordinance.
There are some technical noticing things that we could do on a short-term basis, but then, yes, we would change the ordinance.
Okay. Are you talking about changing the town hall meeting, or?
No, at the moment, I'm just talking...
Or can you change the town hall meeting?
We could. For this year, we kind of have them set. What I'm thinking about at the moment is flip-flopping the Rec. Commission and the Public Safety Commission, and seeing if that extra week of lead time helps. It means perhaps that the feedback could come back... It means perhaps that the feedback could come back from the council sooner, perhaps the chair can meet with the staff sooner, and then there's more time for staff reports to be written and so on and everything would move back a little bit.
I think that would work. Well, if that's your recommendation, put up a report.
I already wrote that down.
It's done. It'll be in the minutes.
Before we say, yes, may I poll the commissioners? Would the fourth Monday work?
If, that's fine.
If that is okay.
Do we need to ask the other commission?
So, what would be...
A lot of department heads. Can they make it?
Oh, yeah, that's gonna be...
All Mondays are bad, right? But you're...
No, I just want, I won't have up-to-date crime data.
That's all right.
Other than that.
We'll have same crime data you probably have now, and it'll just be another week later. But that's all right, I think. Would that work? We're agreed if it can be done.
Yeah, so technically, what you would do is you would, from us, and your staff support Laura can talk to Nia about how to make this happen legally, but basically, you would cancel, you would officially cancel your regularly scheduled meeting. We would post a notice of cancellation, and then you, as the chair, would call a special meeting, and it would be just the following.
Until we get this fixed.
Until we get this fixed.
So, we will cancel the May meeting and then call a scheduled meeting in May.
Correct. That's what I'm saying.
Or do we want to try to do this this month?
Sure.
And then we've already published...
It was supposed to be Monday.
Yes.
I think we've already published the agenda and probably posted it.
Next month.
Not yet.
So, let's do it in May.
Not yet.
Tomorrow?
Not yet.
It goes out tomorrow. We can change it. We heard on the city council.
Recommendation reasons.
Shall we, can we...
I might suggest that you might not want to do that because Monday, we were going to talk about the CIP, and the council talks about it.
There's a reason to say this one.
Any recommendations you have, it can be tinkered with before the publication date for the council's agenda, which occurs about a week after your meeting next week.
Well, thank you. That's a good idea.
You started in May. And to back up to where you were at with action, would it be helpful if you're receiving something from the city council, or for that matter, from the departments, to have more explicit direction in writing before the agenda comes out as part of an action sheet? So, to pick up on the seven, 10, and of course, I don't know the details of your specifics, but to say, to review the packet, to hold two public hearings, and by X date, compile a report with recommendations.
On X, Y, and Z.
Yeah.
That's exactly. That would be incredibly helpful.
So, that would come through to you on a sheet with the specifics detailed, and then you could submit back through the department that it's coming to you. Or if it's coming from the council, we would work with that department head and have it explicitly detailed. Okay, that makes sense.
Can somebody make that happen? I have an additional item. I don't know other commissioners. We, when the commission was created, we initially organized, and a chair was appointed and a vice chair was, well, I think a chair was nominated, the vice chair nominated. We elected, we elected us ourselves, yeah. But we don't have a formal fiscal year structure per se ever documented anywhere. So, we've talked among ourselves about, since the commission's commissioners' terms generally end on a June 30th date, we're thinking the commission's year ought to be July 1 through June 30th. And as a result, we're thinking of electing new leadership in June of 2019 to be effective July 1 of 2019. Is that okay?
When does their term?
They're staggered. Which also allows me to ask the question, and...
It usually occurs at the first meeting of the new fiscal year.
Well, that might be.
During the meeting.
Well, the chairperson's left among the members to settle by the council.
Yeah, I think July 1 of the year.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Very good. So, I hear from one of the councilmen that the procedure is typically to not make, to not elect new leadership until July, the July meeting, and then ask them to take the, to begin their role instantaneously? Is that how it works?
Typically, it's reorganized, and when the new members are seated and joined, if you had an opening, we interview for that. It would be once those new members are sat, it would be the first action that you take.
Okay.
That you're July.
As a practical matter...
It's fine.
Yeah, as a practical matter, we'll figure out who's going to be what in advance, and we'll have whoever involved in agenda, in the agenda process for July and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, you just now make during the meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, I was going to mention that. I noticed that the new, that you've just appointed an alternate with a term that expires on a date other than a June 30th. Is there a reason for that?
April 10, 2021.
Oh, no, that should not have occurred. It's the alternate should go in whatever the position was.
I think we are. Twenty and 21.
I think that...
I think mine was two years over there.
Yeah, so it should be, you should be forfeeling his term, so whatever.
Again, I have a question about the June 30, 2020, because I don't know if June's term expired that day or 2022.
So, why don't you let us go back and check on that? We can write you a motion on consent at a later meeting to do that, but for now, at least they're seated and you can continue to...
Yeah, but it would be nice to clean that up.
We'll clean up the days to make it consistent so that you're filling the position that you're all been appointed to.
Thank you. Other issue, anything anybody wants to raise, new, older, or other commissioners?
Basic, maybe just a basic question on the meetings. And this is a public meeting night tonight.
Yes.
Public invited, where zero room for public tonight in this room, really? I mean, they could stand around the corners. You know, it just, it seems so odd to me getting started with this commission that I'm used to business meetings where we sit around a table, we actually make decisions and do things. And it just, I said this when we first started, that it seemed really awkward. We're kind of looking down the bench at each other, and my question is, can some of the meetings take place in this room to where it's a different environment? It's like we're actually sitting, talking about things, invite the public.
Or the library? We talked about the library at one point, too.
Someplace where it's just a little more, and we're not, I don't want to say too formal, where it's so formal, where it's actually, you sit down, where they actually sit down and you make some decisions and you have a meeting. And the other is, it's awkward just being five of us. Eugene and I, last year, were the only subcommittee all year long, and it was trying to get both of us together at the same time to have two of us to a meeting. We can't have three to a meeting because of the Brown Act, and I think it was hard enough to fill the fifth position. It took a while to get a fifth position, but perhaps, I think South Pasadena has seven commissioners, which allows for a three-person committee, which allows for a little more flexibility if you're meeting and you have a project dividing up things for people to do and research. I don't know. These were things that came to mind throughout the year that would be good to address or at least understand why it could happen.
I think we'll have staff look into that, contain that idea. But Barnes would be a good choice. I think this room is not great. If you have 30, 40 people show up, I think...
You need to take medics. And taping facilities are set up in there, and they're individually set up at times when we need the city council. So, it is capable there, but otherwise, you have to move a lot of equipment. It's just easier to flip a switch there.
And they're heavily booked there, so you really have to check. It's sometimes very difficult to get a meeting time.
Yeah.
Because you would need it every month.
It sounds like it's logistics, so that's good. I understand that.
You two would like to look at each other.
Yeah. If there's only one exit, so we can shut and lock it.
You may have noticed, if you've attended one of our meetings, that we do manage to squeeze six people in up at a time. So that everybody...
We all be commissioned to do so.
So that everybody, you know, if they're throwing rocks, they can hit anybody.
No, he would put the antenine up front so he gets him first.
I'm in the middle, you know.
This is the first time I've met James, I'm the commissioner alternate. I'd put you on the spot, but maybe just introduce yourself and...
Sure. My name is James Lanning, and I grew up in San Reno. I've been here since seventh grade. I'm a physician, and I've never had any formal role in public safety, but I've had many leadership positions, and I'm looking forward to contributing whatever I can from a leadership perspective.
Do you, I mean, obviously, you live in town. What part of town? North, south, east, west?
St. Albans and Adair.
St. Albans and Adair.
I have two kids.
We know where that is.
Yeah. It's in San Reno. Six, eight-year-old.
Also has a stop sign.
Yeah, that's right.
We know where all the stop signs are.
He was involved last year.
He was involved, actually, in the effort to...
It's a stop sign.
That's where I first met all you.
Out in the audience.
We had a long string of emails. Do you remember?
Don't let him know.
Yeah, I didn't throw any rocks.
He threw rocks. I didn't know.
You're familiar with our tradition that the newest member hosts the barbeque.
The meal will be smoked at least 10 hours.
We're good.
Can I ask a question? How, you've held both public meetings on the seven, 10? Are you guys going to have recommendations ultimately on what we should do?
We have, the staff is in the process of gathering additional facts, developing materials, and will be coming back to our commission in May.
Oh, excellent.
And with the hope that we can, where we would, of course, hold a public meeting as part of our regular meeting, and would be our hope that if not that time, then within the short period thereafter, a meeting or so, we would have recommendations for you.
Michael, is there any time limit on when we must get back?
Currently, no. Metro has not yet published their funding agreement dates, although the last conversation I had with them, they were thinking it was going to be toward the end of the year because they're already behind on their schedule.
Sure. Thank you.
Any more comments, questions?
What are the top two or three issues you're seeing?
Well, I guess this would be a matter of individual opinion, but certainly, we've had a good deal of interest in the traffic issues in town. And we've probably had as more, I'm just thinking back, we've had more situations in which the public has come to the commission to raise concerns about traffic and traffic safely. And that may be carryover from the fact that it was the traffic commission at some point, but clearly that. But I think we're also beginning to be helpful to both police and fire, and hopefully to Michael as well, in looking at other issues. For example, issues having to do with the staffing in police areas, conversations about staffing and training. We were, we had the opportunity to be quite supportive to the police department in the development of the community...
Police academy.
Police academy. Those are the areas that I think, I feel like we've spent most of our time. We've also addressed the issue of vacant homes and the effect of that on policing. You, as a council, have, are addressing that issue through a change to the ordinances that affect the requirements to alert the, or to alert the police as to vacant homes and the like. The other thing we've spent some time on, and you were referring to your subcommittee, and the subcommittee did, in fact, do quite a bit of work and make some recommendations with regard to sharing of information within the community, specifically communication through websites and other methods. We were looking at that from a public safety standpoint. Have an adequate way of alerting the public or sharing information with the public. That's another area where we've had the opportunity to do some fact gathering and even shared some opinions, but we've done that back through staff. Isn't that a fair way of, fair answer? As well as through our minutes.
Yep. Good summary. The one about communication went from our committee back to city manager and me, and we were going to request that we got some feedback on that at the commission level as to what the outcome of some of that was, report.
I have not seen a report on your recommendations for communication. So, here's...
No, I met with Amanda, your assistant, and she said to us that sort of we were going to stand down on, and that she would be, you had addressed her, that she would be reaching out to the departments and actually doing the survey and coming up with a game plan on how to put all of this together. And our response when I did discuss that with the commission was to go back and ask you if we could get a report on that.
It should respond, assist the invalid, BLS.
So, it's not a project that she's working on per se, it's her job. So, the assistant to the city manager job, a third of her job description is to be the public information officer. She's actually at a conference this week for public information officers. So, it's not a concrete project that she's working on, and then there'll be a report back. That's just her ongoing job duties is to build our social media presence, revise our website, improve communication methods. She handles the weekly briefing that goes out to the community. But if you're looking for just a periodic update about what her efforts are, I'm sure we can make that.
Yeah, that would be good. I mean, we spent some time on it, and it would be, I think it would be interesting to the commission to know where, so it doesn't get pushed aside again and there's other things that happen.
Can that report also go up plus on city council?
Yes, but I just want to be clear. When the commission started talking about this issue, the conversation that we had from the beginning, Jeff, your head keeps...
You went back.
The initial discussion that we had was that this, that citywide communications is not really in the purview of the commission. This is actually a staff responsibility, and it's Amanda Fowler who we hired to be the assistant to the city manager. So, it's been my understanding that the focus of the subcommittee was specifically as it relates to public safety and maybe coming up with some recommendations on that specific issue, and then feeding them back through Amanda. So, it's just kind of an update on staff work in general, but as we have website updates and social media updates, we, of course, would be sharing those with council and the whole community.
Well, it'd be helpful to you to have our one-page summary of what we had done.
Did you, and did you give that to Amanda as well?
The one I'm sorry?
And sorry.
We don't have a one-page summary because we just...
Oh, if you have a one, I see. Yes, I understand. Yes, that would be fantastic.
Maybe we'll make it a point to create a summary of our recommendations.
Yeah, that would be great.
We never really got to the recommendations because we didn't complete our part, our part of the project. And yet, I was...
But maybe we can at least provide there with some formal, something in writing as to where we were, what we were hoping to find.
And so, just to be clear, to the extent that you have public safety ideas about things that might be helpful, those are great ideas to pass along to Amanda. That's, we don't want you to stand down from that sort of thing if you have ideas about that.
All right. I'm sorry, we have a meeting at 6:00, so...
Yeah, thank you for inviting us.
Thank you for serving.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it. So, next is written communications or public writings contributed. See none. Public comments, none. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.